Call in the meeting order. Oh, please rise. Then I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Violet?
Here.
Alderman Begley?
Here.
Alderman Bassow?
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski? Alderman Key?
Here.
Alderman McRogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Here.
Alderman Clifford?
Here.
All right, no special presentations at this time. Under consent calendar, we've got two items, the approval of minutes from the city council meeting on August 1st, 2023, and the approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending August 11th, 2023.
So move.
Second by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
No sealed bids tonight. Under my report, just like to remind everyone that school is opening, you know, so watch out for the kids going to school and please be cognizant of the rules and regulations as they pertain to school buses and people stopping and not passing school buses and the like as you see them stop. Other than that, that's all that we have. We had a hearing tonight, earlier tonight regarding the Palisades Business District 2 Harlem Avenue corridor. So what I would do is I would like to receive a motion to adopt an ordinance for the approval of the business district plan and designation of the Palisades Business District Number 2 Harlem Avenue corridor. So move. Move on by Alderman Key, second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, then also need a motion to approve and adopt an ordinance imposing a business district retailer's occupation tax and a business district service tax, occupation tax, in the Palisades Business District Number 2 Harlem Avenue corridor.
So make that motion.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to refer it over to a finance committee for discussion. I think it's a little too soon to impose a retail tax on their businesses as this quick of a notice without giving them proper notification.
Give a second.
You're amending it to go to...
I want it, I want it to go to finance committee. Have a look at the impact of this 1% sale tax.
Die for lack of a second.
Well, it's committed. All right, then I vote no.
Die for lack of a second anyway. Okay.
It's, I, wait.
No, die for lack of a second.
He made the motion. I'll second it because, you know, this didn't actually go through finance and it should have. I mean, Jeff, come on, I mean, if I, if we started doing stuff on direct thing around you, would you say something? I think you would.
What do you mean going around you?
Why didn't it come to finance? This directly affects the cities...
The four of us on the committee, Mike, are here.
I get it, I get it, but it didn't go through the actual committee and normally we do have a routing that it goes from A to B. And I'm not, I'm actually in favor of it, but I'm just saying, it would make sense. We wouldn't have to vet a lot of this type of discussion in an open forum.
If I can.
Didn't we have a committee?
We had a committee of the whole on this whole thing before. The consensus was to go ahead with it. And so that's what we're doing. You know, the operations of the tax, as it, after, once it's enacted, that would have, will go through finance just as any other, you know, any expenditures will go through finance.
It did go through a committee though, because it didn't go to finance. And, I mean, we could debate that all along. But we had a zoning meeting where we discussed this, this whole subject.
Well, and we had a committee of the whole.
And, and so we've had multiple times of hearing about this and plus, this is part of our packet, which is, which, what was presented at the public engagement, you know, before this meeting. And so, I mean, at some point, if you're for it...
I'm for it.
I'm for it. It's gonna get out of committee, Mike.
I agree, I'm gonna probably, I'd be happy to second it. I think what Alderman Clifford was just saying, just, and that's the reason I agree with him, is he just didn't say that he has a problem with it. He wanted to give the business owners a chance to make a, like, are they aware of it? That's all I think. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I...
We published notice of it in the newspapers and we also had a hearing tonight.
Okay, I didn't know it was in the newspapers, so.
So, I mean, were, there were no...
I was just wondering if you got any impact from the, some of the businesses that are around it, maybe shoe lining it, that what they thought of putting, whether they looked online or didn't look online and got the information because a lot of them don't.
Ken did talk to them.
And just, wait a minute, and just to say that how this tax would implement them, staying in a business or not. Because that penny, or like Linda in the shop, it's a, pennies add up to a lot. But if they feel that that tax would maybe throw them over the brink, then I think they should have their say. That's all I'm, the concept of it's good to get the improvement, but I just want to be fair to the business owners.
It was published, wasn't it? It was published in the paper, right?
Uh, yes, it was published in the paper twice. And I have been in communication with businesses all along Harlem Avenue. And one of the businesses was here. Another one had planned to be here, but had a family emergency. But the two that were here were from past health foods. They know that this penny is coming. And then I've spoken with others along Harlem Avenue and all of them express favor for it. It is a penny that they are not paying, but it is passed along right at the cash register. Whoever wants to come in and have food, dinner, or go to past foods, then yes. But another thing is, compared to other municipalities in our area, we have one of the lowest tax rates, sales tax rates. Many of the other municipalities exact another penny home rule sales tax that can be spent anywhere. No, this one penny is benefiting the properties and the businesses within the business district. And all the businesses I've spoke with are well aware of that and all of them have expressed favor. Are they all here? No, they are busy operating their businesses and keeping our community, the quaint community it is.
Do you know of even one business that is not in favor of this?
I have not heard of one business that is not in favor.
You've talked to them all?
Uh, I haven't talked to every single one of them.
You have.
But all the major ones that contribute to our district, if you will.
Would you say you talked to a majority of them?
I just, like, I think what we're saying, if I heard the follow-up from what Jeff was suggesting, is, or even you, Mary, that we're not really setting, we haven't really even said it's a penny yet, or it's a nickel, I mean, not a nickel, let's strike that, a penny, or a half a cent, or a quarter. Because in the presentation earlier, it was a 25, 25 cent, or 25%. So you could do a quarter of 1%, right?
Right.
Or a half, or three quarters, or a one.
It, it can be quarter cent increment up to a full penny. This ordinance is for the full penny. If we want to lower it later, then we can lower it later. But again, this was part of the discussion, part of the committee of the whole as well as my discussions with each one of the businesses that I've spoke with, is that they know it's a full penny. They know that it's going to be coming on in, in January. That, that'll be the first, January 1 is the first day it would be enacted. And between now and then, we'll get more information out to them so that they're very well aware of it. They'll also know the benefits of it, so, but there's...
So we're just trying, so we're just trying tonight to address the plan, make it the ordinance. There's no money involved tonight. There's nothing, nothing for anything. This is nothing more than a business plan and have it adopted and approved. Which is something that we actually discussed two weeks ago.
Committee of the whole and planning and zoning.
Well, we had the committee of the whole, but then we addressed it again at the planning and zoning committee.
Correct.
So I have a question. On that, so do we, because Alderman McGovern just suggested is there's no money involved. So that means the one cent, which is the way it's written, is not in there. I think if we are gonna have the one cent, we should amend this motion. We can do it now. Somebody can, you know, amend it to say it's going to be a one cent additional fee.
But that's a part of the plan, right?
But that's what he just said.
I would oppose that suggestion because we can actually, this gives us more flexibility. We can actually, right now it's for the max, is what we're saying, but we can actually reduce it if we want. Whereas if it just says 1%, then we're stuck at 1%.
And if we reduce it, or, if we reduce it, it must be reduced in quarter increments.
But what he just said, was, the only reason I bring it up, unless I'm missing something, or maybe I should get up a little later, is that he was gonna put a one cent, he said it's gonna be a one cent.
A maximum of one.
No, he said, Ken, what did you say?
The ordinance is written as one penny.
1%.
1%, it's written as 1%.
So that's all I'm saying is, if it is in there, and if it is one cent, Alderman, I think we should just put it in there. And so it's in the minutes. Right, I mean, right now it's, it could be, it's wide open.
No, no, the ordinance, the ordinance that's in the pack.
I make amendment that the motion to adopt the ordinance to oppose the business district retailer's operational tax and the business district service to be beyond, not more than one cent, but not less than one quarter cent.
It's, it's in there.
It's 1%. No, it isn't here.
It's, it's down there as 1%.
In, in the ordinance itself, in the ordinance itself, it's one.
Mayor, it's in this, right? Right, yeah.
Okay, so it is in there then?
It's in the ordinance.
All right, so we don't have to amend it, I guess? As long as it's in there, because I think, you know, because we don't want to have discussion of what did we actually agree to at this meeting? A quarter, a half, a one, or whatever? So I think, as long as it's in there, but I, I don't think any of us are actually looking at the actual ordinance, which is probably more than this one sheet of paper.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in the foundation. You've got the motion to defer, do you want to...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Jack can withdraw his motion?
Right.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Just so I'm clear, this is not on Jack's motion.
No, Jack was due his motion.
Okay, I was confused with what he said.
So was I.
I, I would, I, yes.
Okay, so you're second to this motion? Yes, it stands then, okay, all right.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Okay. That's all I have today. City clerk? You don't have one yet. We will though. City treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The treasurer's report for the month ending July 2023. General fund began the month with $5,684,598. Revenues for the general fund were $882,455. Expenses totaled $999,444. Other source used $2,822, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,564,786. Total of all funds began the month with $26,775,320. Revenues for July were $1,791,816. Expenses totaled $1,727,389. Other source use $4,232, giving a total balance in all city funds of $26,835,514. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Move by Alderman Violet, is there a second? By Alderman McGovern? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Let's just go back to that number eight. Do you have a second on that, person?
I have Key and then McGovern.
Alderman Key, and second, Alderman Clifford, second at number eight, just so. Jack, you seconded the motion? Okay, all right. Oh, this one, housekeeping, okay. Uh, city attorney?
I have no report.
Any communications, anyone have? Citizens wishing to address the council? If not, Alderman McRogan?
No report on finance, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Alderman Bassow, public safety?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda. However, I'd like to emphasize again the prospect of diligence and protecting yourself from scammers. Last week, there was an article in a Tribune headline, "People Losing More Cash to Scammers Than in 2021." So the tune is the same, except the numbers are different. In 2022, the reported consumer losses to fraud totaled $8.8 billion, a 30% increase. The sad situation in most part is that the scams are just, are the same, except they're getting a wider spread. They're using different facilities, like the computer and the social media, et cetera, et cetera, to attract people to their scams. Interesting fact is that younger adults aged 20 to 29 reported losing money more often than older age folks, 70 to 79. But when the older folks did lose money, they lost a lot more. And that's obviously because there's many investments, many savings plans, many IRS, many insurance policies, et cetera, et cetera, that older individuals have amassed in their lifetime. So the pot is bigger to scam from. And if you, it's the same story. If you should get a robo-call from someone you don't recognize, a situation you're not familiar with or you're comfortable with, simply hang up. The same thing goes for texts on your phone. Just hit delete. Don't, don't open an app, don't correspond with anybody, don't put yourself open to, to a scam. Currently, in the past couple of weeks, I got two of the older ones on my phone for requesting contributions to the police order of something or other. And obviously, our police department in Palisades does not solicit phone funds in any way, shape, or form. So don't fall for that scam. Just hang up on those people and you'll protect yourself from as many future scams as you can. It doesn't hurt to send these messages on to your children, obviously. If young people are getting scammed, picking up the phone and these messages more often than older folks like myself. If you have older relatives, friends, or neighbors, have this conversation with them as often as you can. Every time you hear something or see something or read something, remind them of the possibilities. It only takes a minute to call a known phone number to find out if your checking account is really gonna get closed or if your gas is really gonna get turned off, or if the police are gonna be knocking on your door with the IRS. And those things never happen, so can't, you can't be warned enough. And we're all susceptible to being scammed. So that's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I add two things to his report, please? Number one, okay, never on a robo-call use the word "yes." Because once you use that word, they can transform it into anything else and you can start getting bills forever in two days and get yourself in tons and tons of legal trouble. Okay, so never use the word "yes." That's the most, that's probably one of the most important things you can ever do. Secondly, oh shoot, I forgot what I was gonna say. It has something to do with one of the other scams.
Police?
Oh, yeah, thank you. It was the Illinois State Police thing. They're illegal. Police departments cannot, by state law, try and solicit funds over the telephone.
Mayor?
That's all I have. I just wanted to add that.
Since we're on this topic, there's two things. Alderman McGovern's great and the word "yes." There was just an article on the internet about where they were pretty clever. They, they made the call, they picked, someone picked up and the person on the line said, "Can you hear me okay?" And waiting for the word "yes." And, and then it went on in this article. They tried like two to three different ways to get a "yes." And when the person was clever enough not to answer "yes," they hung up, which is good. The other thing I would highly recommend, because we're seeing a lot of it in the profession, I'm in the banking business, is be very careful about putting checks in, like your mailbox that you're paying. There is a huge amount of check, basically whiting out and redacting the checks. It's, it's getting to be a major, major headache for banks and for people. In fact, one of my neighbors down the street did one and the next thing you know, he was checking his balance on his checking account, he saw a $5,000 check that someone had doctored up and, you know, he had put it in his thing to pay a bill for one of the utilities or something.
That happened, that happened to somebody in my family within the last three months.
So it's, I would just be, it's a word of caution and even people if they're watching from TV, I, you know, go to the mailbox with that check and drop it in the mailbox. I mean, post office bags.
That just happened to a local business for the $209,000. And it came right out of the post office. They opened, then owned a check in their pen, they washed the check, changed the amount, boom, he's out, nine grand. Pretty close to nine grand. Happens all the time. They go right in the mailboxes. Recently in Orland Park, they cut the side of the mailbox open to get in the mail and look for a check. So, you know, if you can find a safe way to pay your bills online, fine. It seems that checks are gonna be outdated pretty soon if this keeps up. But just for your own safety, what Alderman, the Alderman here have expressed for your own warning. Tell your kids too. They're susceptible to it too, so that's all.
All right, municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley?
I have no report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Planning and zoning, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number seven to JSD Landscaping in the amount of $5,078.63 for permits, bidding, contract execution, and grant administration work completed on the Orchard Park project.
Second. Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Rules of construction, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve payment of morris engineering, for engineering services for various projects throughout the city in the amount of $34,328.50.
Move by Alderman Clifford?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye. And on the other note, the road program's coming up to a close. Most of the works finished. Oak Park Avenue, one mile of street curbs and gutters have been replaced. Streets have been repaid, the final coating's on there. Going to a final walk-through to make sure nothing's right. So we hope the residents of the city in the second ward enjoy the smooth riding over there. And the thing is, the mayor mentioned earlier that school will be starting soon. You'll notice some signs popping up around, called "Safety Zone," slow down. Pay heed to those, pay heed to the little ones that'll be walking on the street and obey to, slow it down. They're 20 miles an hour and are in the streets there and the kids are walking there and everything. And we're gonna be putting some more of those signs out at various points, so keep you aware of everything that's going on. Okay, thank you.
All right, license permits and franchises, Alderman McGovern's gonna head out.
Yeah, Alderman Lewandowski's out and he asked if I could take number 13, which is a motion to approve the proposal for the inventory and organization of building plans and permits and documents from Bradford Systems in the amount of $13,009.10.
Second. Move by Alderman McGovern, McRogan, second by Alderman Begley, discussion?
Are they digitalizing this?
I'm sorry?
Are they putting digital on this?
Actually, this is step one and you'll see him back here again. This is going to be to just get it inventory and organization and then there's other steps that'll follow this. Yeah, it's a mess up there.
Computerize it, okay.
Yeah, potential will be the next section.
All right.
Roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
That's the end of my report.
Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
How about business and economic development?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McGovern, for table?
Oh, no report, Mr. Mayor. They're still, they're still jumping for joy after being found by WGN, so.
Okay. Any old business? Citizens wish to ask questions? Okay, new business? I have a very pleasurable moment right now. We had a resignation of our former city clerk about a month ago and started the search to look for someone to take the place of the former clerk. One name came to my mind and came to the same mind of, to Alderman Begley and Treasurer Demicki is Shannon Harvey. I couldn't think of a better person. I've known Shannon a long time. I mean, she's a lifelong resident of Palisades, grew up in Nebahaw and now lives in Nishnawa. I think she's a perfect fit for the job. I mean, she's a partner in a nationwide law firm and she also has been serving the city on the ZBA for, for a while now and, you know, she's got her family, lives here in the community, all, they all live in the community. I see them all the time around town. And it's great seeing them. And so with that, I would ask for your approval to, for my appointment of Shannon Dunn as the city clerk.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion, roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McRogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Shannon.
You guys wanna come in, Jeff?
Come on up.
How are you gonna have time? Oh my God.
There are my nieces and nephews.
All right.
Oh my God.
Hope you got a wide camera lens. Hey Jeff, do a nice job, this might be a Christmas card.
Aye, Shannon Harvey.
Aye, Shannon Harvey.
Having been duly appointed as city clerk of the city of Palisades.
Having been duly appointed city clerk of Palisades.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discerned the duties of this office.
Discerned the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Shannon.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I would get to say something, but for those that know me, I am never lost for words. So Mayor Strauss, Treasurer Demicki, the entire city council, thank you so much for this honor to serve along with you for a community that I, means so much to me and my family and I love very much. But a fun fact is that this is actually not my first time serving as the Palisades City Clerk. Back in 1996, as part of the Mayor for Day program, I was city clerk for a day.
What goes around comes around, right?
What goes around comes around. Just need to brush up on those skills. But back in 1986, actually, my family was moving back from Washington DC. I was very young. And my Uncle Joe Dunn was a realtor here in Palis at Treasonburg Realty, a real, really, some of you may remember. And the building's still standing there over on Harlem, just out of 127. He encouraged my mom, Bill and Pat Dunn, to move to Palisades. He said, "It's the place to be. Everyone loves it. You got kit, you have a family and kids, I think you should go out there." And my parents followed that advice. And about 10, just over 10 years ago, my husband Pat and I bought our first home and for the last almost seven years, we've been raising our daughter Tess. And so many nieces and nephews, cousins, best friends are all here loving Palisades Heights. And really, there's no better place to raise our Tess. And, you know, I was thinking about it, I reflected this last week and it's really an ode to all of you. This town is one for everyone. The, you know, we have the best schools. We have school districts, grammar schools, high schools, San Alexander, Chicago Christian. We have a college that attracts people from around the world. You have Lake Catherine where you just feel like you're, you're in a magical place. You have Oak Hills, which is a beautiful community and awesome golf course. We have, you could go around the world just by going down Harlem Avenue with all the restaurants, the Westgate Valley communities, the best rec center. It truly is the best place to raise, to raise a family. There's, there really is something for everyone. And so when I, before I was coming here, I was just thinking about it, that accounted around my block, not my subdivision, just around my block, there was over 50 kids around my block. And so I promise you too, I have people calling me weekly and my friends, "Hey, do you know of a house that, you know, that's going up for sale? We want to come to Palisades Heights." And, you know, people want to move here. People want to raise a family here. People want to retire here. want to retire here, and the best part about it is people want to stay here. And honestly, I just think that's such an ode to what you have all done, and my, my entire family has been witnesses to it. So really, I just want to thank you all, I really look forward to serving my community and doing anything I can to, to help and be part of this team. Welcome aboard, Shannon.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Alderman. Thanks, Alderman.